I call to order the Board of Trustees' regular meeting for November 1st, 2022, and the time is 6 o'clock. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give an indication?
Sure.
Dear Lord, thank you for this day, and thank you for the fall leaves and the color. And I pray you be with us as we go about our business in here tonight. I pray that you will be with those who protect our freedom that you've given us and that you'll be with their families and their loved ones. Amen.
Please join with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. McKee?
Here.
I move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second. And I'll make a motion to, yes, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add the following under Old Business, OPWC Application Resolution, and under New Business, ODOT Grant Extension Number Two for Global Parkway, Part Two. And those documents are on your plates. The grant extension, we're going to lose it. It's already applied for. We have to be reimbursed.
Any discussion?
More discussion, yeah.
There was a second.
Take the second, discuss it.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Do you have questions? Or the documents are on podium. You've already reviewed the previous OPWC Resolution and the grant extension number two. This is the one we did, I think, on May 27th. We had a special meeting because they weren't able to meet the deadline for the May 1st, or I think it was April 27th we had it. They weren't sure that they were going to give another extension, working with Fred Vogel. They've agreed to extend until next year, and this is for Global Parkway, Part Two. This is a $100,000 grant that has been awarded. This is separate from the 629 grant of $300,000. There's several punch list items that are still outstanding, so we did not anticipate that being cleared and through the county by the end of the year. And that's why this extension is provided. So I just need the authority to sign that. And then, as I said, the OPWC. I believe we should proceed with that. It's $255,000 that the township could be receiving for paving up roads. It's a significant amount of money, so I believe that should be on the agenda.
We voted on this last meeting, and I thought we decided we were going to move forward in waiting until the next project so we can do something in a significant size of a project if we decide to move forward.
Now, look, I believe the discussion wasn't even Mr. Vance indicated that you would like to know specific details, and I have those. Been working at this. The deadline is the 4th this Friday, and we passed this up again last year. Like I said, it was about $200,000. Now we're including more. Next year, we could go for something else, but we've got a lot of roads that need attention. But if you apply for it next year, it'll be two years out that you'll be paving those roads, and a lot of these roads need attention now. These roads are poor to fair. And if we don't do it, we're likely going to be spending 100% on this instead of only 30%. But if the Board wants to pass up $255,000 possibly, that's the Board's pleasure. And this is only to get it on the agenda as I requested. Seems like a light agenda. If there's no further discussion, I'd like to call a question.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Evans? I think you really, on Robert's orders, she needs to call for a question.
Well, I called for a question. She could call for the vote.
No, I'll call for the question.
I can also call.
No. Thomas Ross. Thank you. Call for the question.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
This is just on his addition to the agenda. Yes. I'm sorry, you can call me.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
No.
Tonight, you need to roll call.
So we're called to adopt the agenda as amended. Ms. Varian?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
No.
I move to adopt the amendments for September 7th, September 13th, and September 20th of 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to state, the amendments do not accurately reflect the business of the Board and do not abide by Robert's rules regarding inclusion of motions made. If approved, go and ask a fiscal officer to not certify them, or if certified, to include a dentum stating the motions made to correctly reflect the business of the Board. That's all I have.
I have a question on that. If you guys approve it that way, I don't know how, but if you guys don't approve of what she's putting in there, there can be a dentum to them.
Yeah, I don't approve of me.
Right, but he's requesting she adds something to them.
Yeah, right.
I'm just not sure how.
So we need to, right.
I've never had that happen before.
So what we need to do is roll call just for the changes in the minutes.
The minutes as presented.
As presented.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person, and please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Larry Taylor. I'm with Trey Bell Energy. We are out of Mansfield, Ohio. I will be brief. I just wanted to come by and share some good news and just communicate, make sure we're on the same page. The electric letters that we put together to send out to the eligible residents just to let them know that they can take advantage of the Etna Township electric aggregation price of .0467. Right now, the price to compare, I believe, is 723, 72-something. So this is a great opportunity for the residents to be made aware of and getting the aggregation program. So those letters have been approved, and they will hit in the mail. They should be on the 7th. Trey Bell has also worked with Mrs. McKee and I believe Mr. Johnson to put together the, it's every two-year certification needs to be provided to the PUCO, and we did help facilitate and get that done. So that's something that we don't need to worry about at this point. And also, I guess the best news of all is, is that the electric aggregation program in the last 30 months has saved the residents of Etna Township who are in the aggregation program just under $600,000.
And how many residents does that include, or households?
Specifically, I don't know.
That's not your job.
Well, I mean, he says 600,000, but you've got 600,000. It's only a dollar a piece.
Please, you gotta bring that to the public, please. Thank you, Teresa. I appreciate it. Go ahead. So we can be on the road.
So $600,000, that's fantastic. That's money we hope that the community is able to, you know, the residents are able to put right back in the community. So that's good stuff. The last thing that I want to mention is the volatility in the gas market. We've communicated over the last few months that we hope we can get to a point where we can pull the trigger quickly and do something if the gas prices have dropped. And they have dropped, and Mr. Bell Castro is working on a 12-month deal that we would love to get started yet in January so the residents can save money through the rest of the winter. And it would go through December of next year. But it would be 12 months, and he believes that we could do anywhere between.
You must, go ahead. Give three minutes.
72 cents and 74 cents.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you.
You don't want Teresa to go first, so she can ask her question?
Yeah, that's okay. I'll ask my question when I get up there. Judy Cafmeyer, 29, Roma Court. I'd like to thank Mr. Singleton for his email last week indicating to me that current Etna Township zoning regulations prevent solar and wind farms from invading us. I appreciate Mr. Singleton's communication and do feel somewhat optimistic that current regulations will be enough to stave off the hungry giants for the time being. That is why I will continue to pursue the adoption of Etna Township as an exclusionary zone. We have the current zoning regulations. Now let's add that extra level of protection and provide our citizens with the assurance that their property and quality of life is a priority to our trustees. It also sends the message to the Ohio Legislature that their efforts on our behalf were heard and appreciated. I researched and then requested from other townships in Ohio copies of the exclusionary zone resolutions they passed, some within two months of Senate Bill 52. I am sharing a copy of both a township resolution and a county resolution, which I gave to Commissioner Flowers a few months ago with his assurance of support for our townships. With very little effort, our trustees could simply cut and paste, discuss, and adopt this necessary legislation for Etna Township. I certainly hope that we can set our township apart in Licking County in a good way and lead by demonstrating to solar and wind companies that Etna Township is an exclusionary zone that has zoning regulations prohibiting such facilities, and we will not be compromised. In order to reinforce this effort, I had hoped that a group of ladies from Hartford Township would be able to speak to our citizens about the complications they've encountered over the past year fighting a large solar project in their township. They have compelling stories that illustrate how ruthless these companies can be toward private citizens in their interests. Unfortunately, Safe Hartford Township LLC found out last Thursday that the Ohio Site Planning Board voted to approve and allow the planned solar farms to go forward. This is what happens when non-elected bureaucrats that do not live in the area decide what's best for our rural communities. Although this is a setback for Hartford Township, their fight continues. And let this be an example that we too must always be ready to challenge the opposing forces when necessary. And now I must leave because I must go read at Mass. So I'm looking forward to this being on the agenda in two weeks.
I support that.
The top copy is the township resolution. The second copy is the commissioner resolution. See ya.
Did you say you were going to Mass?
Yes. All six states. It's all six states. I went this morning. Teresa Overshaw, 484 Trail West. And I'll just say, as a side, I compared my kilowatt use, which with my company, compared the kilowatt used in aggregate, I saved money online compared to what we presently have in the Etna Township. But my main reason, on April 19th, we voted to hire the consultant to see if Etna Township needed a trustee administrator, was needed. Over six months, he's been working. I think that gives us enough time to see whether we need to hire our own township administrator who will be responsible to all three trustees rather than, it seems like certain people are getting ignored. If we need a township administrator, we need to hire one. If we don't, if we feel that after six months, a township administrator is not needed, then it's time to cancel the consult contract that we have. I know that he has greatly added input to the township meetings. I know that, matter of president, you have relied on him greatly. So in those aspects, I do feel that a township administrator is needed, a permanent one, not a consultant. This will save us money. We are talking about fiscal responsibility here. It would be cheaper, you know, if we part-time or full-time, depending on what is discussed. But either way, a township administrator needs to be looked at and hired and at costs in that way. Thank you very much.
Ryan Davis, 8807 Watkins Road. Couple things I'd like to discuss, or at least say off my chest. The meeting minutes have kind of fallen behind. I'm not quite sure why. I think it's pretty reasonable to consider that if we're not a meeting or two behind on minutes, there was some confusion between the three trustees on what was on the minutes. So that's something I think we can correct pretty quickly, hopefully. I'm on the board of the new community authority, which is going to oversee the new park once the land purchases are completed. We haven't had a meeting for a couple of months because of really nothing going on with it right now. I've been in talk with Alexis, with the Row Licking County, who's the president of our board, and I've also been and actually talked to face-to-face Brad Kotrol, the assistant auditor of the county. We're waiting on things to happen to be able to collect taxes for this year. We're talking about several hundred thousand dollars worth of tax money that could be applied to the park once it's completed. We're past the official deadline to do that for this year. I do have a question for Ms. McKee, since you're over the new community authority board now. Do you have any updates on where we're at with being able to collect taxes for this year?
Just comments.
I'd like a question answered. Is that okay?
No, it's not. So go ahead. We're listening to you.
Okay. All right. Well, I think it's important to collect the money. I will continue as a board member to do what I can without the elected or appointed position to actually effect change. All I can do is ask the question. Yeah, I'll bring some more answers back because I didn't realize I had to go get the answers, but I asked our elected official, and she's choosing not to answer. So it's okay if you don't know the answer. Okay, I think it's okay if you didn't have the answer and want to come back with us, but I think it deserves an answer, and it's a respectful question. Yeah, I think that's it. I'm kind of just open for questions and answer, open discussion, so have a good night.
Gary Burkholder, 254 Trail East. I just have a few items. I see that we've amended the reports again from the agenda, so I would request it'd be nice if we could get a public update at the meetings, particularly, and I talked about this before, Skanel, Main Street, Rhino Storage. I think for two or three meetings now, we've had no public updates, and I think the residents, including myself, would appreciate to know what's going on with these projects. We still have deficiencies that greatly and negatively impact our community, and we don't seem to be getting any movement in that regard. My second question is, it was my understanding that the Board would be interviewing other aggregation companies, and I believe that was discussed. Is that correct? Are we going to move forward with interviewing other companies as well so that we have competition?
I believe we should.
Well, I do too, particularly given the fact that Treble continues to refuse to reveal what their actual fee is, and I think that goes to transparency. I think that's what the residents and citizens of Etna Township expect. So I do expect an answer from the rest of the Board at some time, and hopefully you'll put that on the next agenda so that we can begin interviewing other companies as well and have a level playing field. Thank you.
I've already asked for that, Mr. Burkholder. Please. For direction.
Any more public comments today?
I'm here to talk about Skanel again.
Can I have your first and last?
Oh. Judy Newman, 9630 Windsor. I'm here to talk about Skanel again. We have not received an update since you accepted a $2,000 contribution for fireworks. It's been three months. They have been cited with two county violations. That's never been mentioned. There's nothing, nothing has been changed. I thought that they were supposed to start working back there on the drainage months ago, is what we were told, and there has not been anybody back there. I don't think any warehouse should be allowed to come into our community and have such a negative impact. We have the noise, we have the lights. When we have cloud cover like we did yesterday, we have goons in our yard. It's just unacceptable. I would like to ask that Mark Evans take over Skanel. We've been working with Mr. Vance for six months. Nothing's gotten anywhere. I would prefer Mark Evans. He has more citizen engagement with this community and the township residents, and if he would accept it, you know, I would prefer to have Mark Evans take over Skanel so that he can get something done. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'm always willing to do what I can. I've worked on it prior and also was willing to work with Mr. Vance, but he chose not to.
Thank you.
Two more public comments today? One once, one twice? Anybody? Public comment? Well, we'll move on over to the new business. I would like to accept John Foster's resignation for the last day was October 5th, 2022. He was one of our gentlemen who worked over in the road department, so resigned. His last day was October 5th. I want to get that on the record. Also, I would like to.
But just one point on that, he actually resigned for October 7th, but he quit the 5th.
Well, we have the 5th. That's the day he quit.
His resignation was for the 7th, but he quit the 5th.
Well, it says the 5th. So that's what I took, the date he left. That's it.
That's from the record.
On an email from Mr. Evans, he changed one of the dates at one time back to the 5th, so that's where I got the date. If you want to use his resignations officially, the date Mark said his last day was the other day he gave him.
Right.
He hasn't worked since the date on the agenda.
Which is the 5th.
The email I sent Mrs. Brown was stating that his last day was the 5th when he said I'm done, and not the 7th for his resignation. So I just won't make that.
I don't recall seeing an actual resignation letter for Mr. Foster, so I can use whichever day Mr. Evans would prefer.
Do I have a motion on that? Do I have a motion on that? Second?
I'll second.
Could you restate your motion?
Yeah, restate it.
I would accept the John Foster's resignation with last day, October 5th, was his last day of work, but he resigned on the 7th of 2022. And I want to, in the second.
A second. Okay, now.
Okay.
Do we actually, we don't have a letter? Or do we have a letter? I thought I saw.
Yeah, we've got a letter of resignation that I forwarded to the Board, and I've also forwarded to the Board. It was for October 7th.
Right, but he actually resigned on the 5th.
He just left two days, he quit two days early.
Correct.
Did he date October 5th? Saying his last day was the 7th, is that what he said?
Correct.
Or his last work, okay.
He said he'll work through the 7th, and then he quit.
Yeah.
I mean, do we need an official, when someone quits to, I mean, it's not accepting a resignation. This is a month old, so. We'll do whatever.
Mr. Evans?
We'll just, we accept this.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay.
You're not going to worry about having a motion on it?
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I want to move on to the resolution to reduce the road limits in Etna Township. Do you want to go with that, Mr. Evans?
That's not Mr. Evans.
You want me to do that?
You want to do the?
I'm over Brownson. I forwarded this and requested it be on the agenda, so I wonder if it would be appropriate that I deal with this?
You want to deal with it, Mr. Baba? Would you rather? Because either one, it doesn't matter.
I don't have a case for it.
Okay, go ahead. Evans?
All right. I move to adopt Resolution 22110101, Resolution to reduce road limits on the following streets in Etna Township, Licking County, Ohio, as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second. Which one is this, 01, direct one?
Yes, 01.
And this will be forwarded to the Licking County Commissioners. They'll certify it, and I think they'll have to do it the next day.
Just seconded.
Discussion?
Roll call. Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
We'll move on over to old business payment technology invoice.
Oh, we had the other second addendum added to new business.
Don't put the OPWC in there.
The OPWC was old business. The new business is the ODOT second amendment. Yeah.
What was it? Old business. New. We're moving on to payment technology invoice.
You don't want, we amended the agenda.
Yeah.
So new business, but still the second addendum to the ODOT.
Okay.
Would you like me to present that?
Yes, that would be great.
All right. I move to authorize Mark Evans to sign the second addendum to the Jobs and Commerce Economic Development Agreement, extension of date only.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And this is required, the original extension we did, I think, on April 27th at a special meeting, or actually, April 28th, a special meeting, because on May 1st, the date was going to expire. They originally extended to the end of this year, as I stated earlier. The road, there's a lot of punch list items, and so I had to go through the county and be plotted and accepted. Working with Fred Vogel at the ODOT Department, they've agreed to extend this till the end of next year, and this is for $100,000 that will reimburse the developer for fees. Speaking with the developer, they plan to use $50,000 for landscaping near Edna Parkway and Ashley, which will make an improvement for the area, and they had discussed donating the other $50,000 to the township. There was no reimbursement. had discussed donating the other $50,000 to the township. There was no reimbursement agreement between the township and developer, so that will have to be created and fees discussed on that, but this is just to extend it, so we don't lose out on that.
So we're giving you the authorization to sign the extension?
To just sign the extension. You already did the first one on April 28th. So this is just to make sure, because if we do not get this extension, it will just be out. Like I said, the developers looking to put $50,000 towards landscaping and beautify that area, and I think that'll be a big benefit to the-
But we don't have a contract that says you don't do any, because totally for us?
We don't, we don't have a contract saying that we'll reimburse them. We don't, like the other 629, that we just reimbursed TPA, that's $750,000, and we held back 50 for our administrative expenses. There is no such contract with this. So I, we could, I guess, I've been told theoretically, just keep it, but the promise was to the developer that it would be reimbursed, because it is for their expenses. And like I said, Jempris with TPA has indicated all they're interested in doing is the $50,000 for landscaping, and, you know, would be fine with donating the rest as it is tenably at the moment. So I think it's a win. It's already been granted. We just lose out on it. And the developer said that they weren't really counting on this money, so it's kind of bonus, and that's why they weren't really looking at the full amount.
Call for a question? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. So we'll go over now to old business, payment technology invoice, which is... I'm going to make a motion to request the Licking County Prosecutor's Office to investigate the resolution and invoice related to the reconciled Payment Technology, Inc. invoice number 13990. I also include in this same motion that trustee comments be limited to three minutes upon any second to the motion being received that would allow for discussion.
A second.
Discussion?
So you don't want to pay this for services rendered, but then you also want to limit trustee discussion from the 10 minutes in Robert's rules to three minutes? Is that correct?
Well, I'm going to say this, you keep going back to Robert's rule, but when you, I made a motion for three minutes. I got a second, so-
And I was asking for-
Does not limit your time. It's up to the board. And if, I got a second on it, so we'll move on.
According to Robert's Rules 43-8, it's 10 minutes of debate. Did you get it? 43, 43?
We, we just, again, again, I made a motion. Mr. Johnson, second. So we're up for discussion.
Why are we not paying for services rendered? It is clear in the lengthy discussion by the board, it was intended to treat all roads in Orchard Glen, including Rome Road, which was missed due to an error caused by all the delays and having no engineers estimate possible. The additional amount was under my authority, given at an organizational meeting on 1422. That was not exceeded. If the few side streets would have been completed over by Laurel Drive, it would have exceeded the amount approved, and would this board have refused to pay that, since it was just an estimate, as stated in their document? And the few side streets that were not completed can be treated next year. Again, they provided the service. They should be paid.
Call for a question? Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Under township building security, I make a motion that the Edna Township Board of Trustees accept the proposal of Kevin Wolf to preliminary investigate or analyze the specifics associated with my understanding that is, at least one individual did utilize the Edna Township hall security, and use it for a surveillance purpose. I also include within the same motion that trustee comments be limited to three minutes upon any second to this motion being received that would allow for discussion, and that the results of this preliminary investigation analyzed be made available to Licking County Prosecutor's Office. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to know where the security system is right now. It is not in the building. It contains records of the township. I would like to know, how does covering up a camera with a plastic bag prevent audio, if that was a concern? Who told members that the system was hacked or compromised, and how was that determined? Who authorized the changing of the password, removing access from myself and our fiscal officer? There are outstanding records requested for the video. Have the video records been preserved, and when will they be provided? Why didn't other board members set up remote access? It is standard in security systems. And when this was approved, it was stated that there should be no audio. Others were responsible for this setup. Have you verified that there was audio? If you will not answer the questions of our residents, will you answer the questions of fellow trustee?
Call for a question? Ms. McKee, may I? As the public records official and, you know-
Custodian.
Custodian of the records, where are the records for this? Where is the server and the screen and the SD cards that were in all the cameras? I have public records requests. We don't have a policy, so they must be preserved indefinitely.
They're preserved, I'm sure.
Where are they?
I'll ask the call for the questions, please.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. We'll move on to the fiscal officer.
We have amended agenda.
Oh, sorry about that.
Under township bowling security?
Yeah.
What's that?
Okay.
Oh, okay. I would like to make a motion. Now, we authorize John Singleton to secure his office?
Okay, well, I can second that.
All right. And for discussion, I would like to state that, number one, it is against the employee handbook, that all trustees have access to all lots of areas, and it's also contrary to our legal representatives. You can't, you cannot withhold files, information from another trustee. We are equal, and this is not proper. This is an open meeting. There shouldn't be any whispering.
Oh, it's not. I just had to clarify what she had put on that form, because I noticed it was not this.
Look, I, I, Mr. Singleton's office is open during normal business hours. So it's, so it's not normal, so it's, he can secure it after normal business hours? Is there a better way to make a motion?
Secure it how?
All trustees have equal access to all systems and areas. Now, I've had files that were hidden, moved by Mr. Singleton after request.
In yours?
After, no, it was sitting on his desk, and he removed it and failed to provide that information, so that's-
For the normal hours?
Yes, for a weekend act.
So you, you came in there normal hours?
No, no, after hours.
After hours?
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying secure it under, I mean, after hours.
The trustees have changed my motion, or? Trustees have equal access to all areas. You cannot exclude one trustee's access, and that's been well documented by our legislative council.
I, I, that's not true. That's his office, and things have came up missing in his office and-
What has, what has been missing?
Files, files were missing out of his office.
And why is there security cameras in there?
You know, because we're not there to survey. That's the whole thing. It's not for surveillance. It's for security. For instance, if something happens here today, it will be on tape. We can go back and-
DVR is not there?
Okay. Again, if, but because of the situation, things have changed for now. So we'll go back to talk about Mr. Singleton preserving his office. I'd like Mr. Johnson, he or trustee Johnson wants to bring a motion, and I support it. I second it. We had your discussion, and now we're going to let him know the call for the question.
It's not legal. Do you call for a question?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. At least she's loyal.
No, he's following the law.
No, no. Okay, let's move on to OPWC. Mr. Evans, would you like to present?
Yes, it's the second time I'm presenting this. I move to adopt Resolution 22110102, resolution to authorize Mark Evans to prayer and submit an application to participate in Ohio Public Works Commission's State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs, and to execute contracts as required. And the contracts are for the OPWC. It's not for bidding or awarding or anything. Don't we need a second?
I know, but I need to ask a question for some. I don't recall this, because I wasn't expecting this on the agenda, but I believe part of your motion is you have to have her prepare to certify the funds as part of your application on the floor. Just making sure that you're not missing something.
Wait, no, wait. The, there's an entire checklist and-
I believe there's part of it where she has to certify the funds as part of your application.
I have. I believe it is. You certified it was there?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a whole checklist, and that's part of the application process.
Then I won't help you anymore, Mark. I'm sorry. That's just, I know that's part of the whole that we had in the past, was getting Walter Rogers to certify a letter to make sure the application could be turned in. I was just making sure.
Right. We have a competent fiscal officer that is quick in her duties, and she has provided that. There's much to this application process. A lot of it I have done since the last time it was turned down by this board. I've not entered anything into the system, waiting for approval here, just to apply. And again, this would, has it been seconded or we have to debate?
No, we have to make a second yet.
Okay.
There's a second.
How much does it say?
$255,000. Slodmy. Otherwise, we pay for it. Would it help if I amend the motion to add Rosalind McKee as the individual applying?
You're not going to do that anymore. You know, that's not up to you.
Well, I can amend it.
Yeah, the dime.
$255,000.
And then what's the maximum? Why don't you tell the whole story about it? Let's, let's talk about everything when it comes to that. Let's not-
I think we're going to, that was the discussion.
It's only worth it, okay?
It's our money.
The whole story is we'll be paying $365,000 instead of $109,000.
And we'll move over to the fiscal officer report, resolution to approve the purchase orders. I move Resolution 221102 to approve the- Oh, sorry, this is the old.
You made a question about payment technologies?
Yes, yes. So we're going to remove payment technology off of there. Yeah, yeah, that won't be on that. Yes, payment technology. Yeah, I move Resolution 221103 to approve minus Payment Technology Group, the purchase orders as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I think it's wholly inappropriate that you're removing an item that, again, under the January 4th, 22 organizational meeting, which you attended and voted for, under my $2,500 a month authorization for expenditures, which this falls under, that you're refusing to pay that bill. We're going to destroy our relationships with our vendors, just like we did with our neighboring entities, and the residents are going to pay for it. Nobody's going to want to work with this township. And I did have a question on the mileage reimbursement. Was the-
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We're here. We're discussing this.
Right, and your mileage reimbursement is on this. Was it corrected, because you had the incorrect file?
Yeah, it was fixed. Yeah, because it changed in July. The amount changed in July. That's when it changed.
Just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, I'm very aware of that. And we could discuss that under bills, because payment of bills, there's bills here that looks like- Question. Let's call for a question, please.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to ratify the payment of the above listed bills for November, as shown on payment listing, with the exception of the check number 10582 to Brookler and Eckler LLP for $3,533.50. Also, 10, number, check number 10583 to Payment Technologies, which we discuss, Inc., for $154,730, and also, check number 10584 Payment Technologies, Inc., for $2,498.95. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I think that's inappropriate, that, again, you're not paying a fiscal officer's legal bills under her authority, given at the organizational meeting. She has that authority. And Payment Technologies, again, they provided the service. And I do have a question about check number- And I do have a question about check number 10581 to Brochus, Johnson, and Griggs, in the amount of $5,990.50. This board authorized services for Brochus and Griggs up to $10,000 for the year. We've exceeded that by 200%, I think we're at $20,000 a year. So, under what authority are we continuing to engage with them without increasing that authorization, which that did require board action per that resolution? So I don't, how is that appropriate to pay that bill? The only person that's in contact with them using our services is the president, and if we want to talk adhering to resolutions, we're double the authorized amount.
Well, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Let's say President McKee, two trustees can choose by majority to vote to pay any bill that is directed to the township.
That's correct, that's correct.
So we have a resolution stating otherwise, that it requires board action. Would you like to refer that to the prosecutor?
Be glad to, be glad to, that's, yeah, so we can, we can support each bill as they come in as a board, it's up to us. So if we get the support of the board, then we can do it. So it's up to us.
But the thing is, at an organizational meeting, we were given the authority of $2,500 a month, and the board cannot then just pick and choose what they're going to pay or not.
That's not, that's not the case, Mr. Evans, you're not telling them the whole story, that's not the case. We will pay our bills as they come in, if their legal bills, we'll pay the legal bills. If the town, and, and back to when you mentioned Ms. Verin, that we refuse to pay the bill, she doesn't have the authority to go out to Brickler and Eckler and run up a bill, we have our own legal team, which is for the board, which is for the township board, not for the fiscal officer, okay, so let's be clear on that. Second of all, um, I, you know, when I got the bill, I looked at the bill, and our, um, I don't know if you know this, Mr. Pete Griggs, our attorney, is the one that's working on the CIC, not Brickler and Eckler, we didn't hire them.
Bricker and Eckler did not charge us for the...
Oh, this one, your bill, it's on there. This one, your bill, it's, uh, here.
As the fiscal officer for the CIC, I can ask you some...
I'm just telling you what they have, I know it's on there.
Ask a question.
Could you, worth of...
It's on here.
Yeah, they, it's on there.
What I think the president is missing, again, is the fiscal officer has authority of $2,500 a month, if she wanted to buy cotton candy for the township for $2,500...
I won't do that, I won't go out and buy a $200...
These are her legal services.
I won't go out and buy a $200 air fryer and a $150 table for the road group, I won't do that, because that's not important, there's a microwave over there, and then there's an additional $44 I guess you bought for them, so if they're, if, if you have to have it repaired, that I saw additional fees for that $44.
So you don't want to support a road crew?
I would support a road crew, but, but an air fryer does not support a road crew, a microwave is there and it works because they can stand it. And just to be clear, I have an air fryer at home, it didn't cost about $200 or $100.
Can we get a motion to end a second?
Yeah, that's, yeah. Call for, um, roll call?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Okay, um, just had a question in regards to the 2023 budget, let's see where we are, are we going to start working on that, Ms. Verin?
Actually, yes, I have that for my topics, on my topics tonight, I would like to have it prepared and permanent at the end of December, so that it can be a permanent budget starting in Gen, beginning of January.
Awesome.
I also wanted to bring up a couple other things if appropriate.
Yes.
Um, I didn't get a chance at the last meeting to give the financial report for the end of September, the year-to-date expenditures were $2,600,000, and the year-to-date revenue has been 4.4 million. Currently, something to consider is that we have $225,000 left over from the Taylor Road project that appears to be completed, and we have $50,000 from the 629 grant that Mr. Evans secured. We can consider transferring that total of 275 to the general or the road bridge for further projects. I'm still projecting a $4 million carryover into 2023. And I also have a packet that I'm going to hand you right now, that has wage information for local fiscal officer assistance, and I feel that due to the economic development occurring now and in the future, that my office warrants an assistant. So depending on the qualifications of assistant, I believe the salary range should be 20, between 20 and 28 per hour. And I provided the packet...
You do it yourself, pretty good.
Yeah, I provided the packet for the board to review and decide what they're comfortable with salary-wise, and we can discuss this at the November 18 meeting in the fiscal officer report. Within the packet is also a job description for some of the areas that the assistant can help me with, and if we discuss it on the 18th, that should allow plenty of time for you to review, and then I can hire the assistant December 1st.
Isn't the 15th?
Oh, isn't the 15th, it's the next meeting, sorry.
And as I understand, our role as board, we cannot dictate the salary or anything, the only thing we do is approve the salary, correct?
Correct.
And this fiscal officer or assistant would work under your direction, correct?
Yes.
Would they be in the office, or would they be working from their home, how are you going to set that up, if that happened, if you go forward on this?
Uh, they will work from home. That's the Mark C. study that they...
Yep.
Oh, yeah, 429, taking salaries.
Well, I'm fully in support of it, because I think we need to get a handle on a lot of the stuff, you've done a great job with getting your books in order after last fiscal officer, and I commend you for that, but I, I definitely think to, to keep up with everything, and with the increase of the reimbursements from the jets, the tips, and all that, just data entry, I, I think this is warranted. Especially looking at, I, I've seen other townships with similar budgets with assistants also. And I think some of their pay rates even go up to $20, $29, so...
I also included as part of it, um, contemplated expenditures for office equipment, IT to install the server access to share the UAN program, and the computer for the town hall to serve, as a server for the UAN program. Those are just estimates.
Will this be on the next meeting or chapter?
It's going to be part of the fiscal officer's report, it should be.
Perfect.
Are there any other announcements from the trustee comments, three minutes for trustee?
Uh, I did have one comment, thank you for starting the timer. We're going to be having a discussion here at Town Hall on November 29 at 6:00 PM, regarding the Department of Developmental Disabilities House on Tolgate, and also they purchased two properties on Palmer, just west of Mink, where they plan to have an additional house. There have been some issues concerning the residents, and there was an incident this morning regarding one of the, one of the residents there, so I think it is good that we're, we're putting this in the works for a while now, and with today's incident, it kind of showed that it's really needed, so I'll be putting more information about that. Everybody's welcome, but this is really geared towards the residents around the Tolgate house, and the one in the future that's next to Russell Heights and across the street from New England Acres, of how it affects them and what the department's going to do. The provider of the house will be in attendance, and they're, they'll be there to answer any questions, provide information, say what they're doing different, to try to rectify the, the issues. And if anybody has questions on that, they can contact me. And I hope this will be placed on the township website calendar for all to see.
Anything, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.